I gotta look my calendar. Hopefully tomorrow. If you're up.
Just let me know what time.
Okay. Thank you.
Chump Chump, Mayor.
Yeah, what's up? You ready?
I'm ready tonight.
The November 20th, 2018 meeting in the City Council of the City of Springfield is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Sinore.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Folgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSenzoe.
Present.
Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderman Tylin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you very much. We do have, I believe, one presentation to the Honor Flight with Joan Portolan and Steve Wheeler here, as well as county representatives, if you want to come forward. And any City Council members that would like to join us, this is the presentation of the funds raised with regards to our wiffleball game that we had on the Y Block. Actually, unfortunately, the weather didn't cooperate with us with regards to softball tournament that we typically have between the county and the city. So we improvised a wiffleball tournament on the Y Block, and the proceeds went to the Honor Flight. So we appreciate the county and then actually the media personnel that came out and had a great time. And the city prevailed, right, Josh?
Yes.
And we have a...
Say that louder.
I had to take the trophy from the media.
That's right. My brother Josh Langfelder, county recorder, Don Gray, he cooked up the wings there. We really appreciate it, which was great. Yep, thank you. And Brian McFadden, if he would have showed up, maybe they would have had a shot. Unfortunately, they didn't.
They're losers.
That's right. But Misty Busher provided, Treasure Busher provided refreshments, which we appreciate. And Doris Turner and others were there. And the one proud moment Josh had, my brother had, he saw it on the picture in the paper. It was the, I hit, I went, I think I had one out. And that's the one that ended up in the paper. I struck out on a curveball that he threw me. But we prevailed and we appreciate it. And Josh made the wonderful trophy.
With duck egg?
Yep. The wiffleball trophy. Y Block champs. But the most important reason to get together, not just to activate the Y Block, but most importantly, to provide proceeds to the Honor Flight. And we're proud to say that through it all, we raised $1,816.
Thank you all for doing this. And we thank you for calling attention to Honor Flight, making sure that the public knows who we are and what we do. And that's our way of getting to our veterans to make sure that they get the trip to Washington that they have earned and they so deserve. So we thank you so much for doing this for us. And we'll come out next time and vote and root for you guys.
Yeah, it's to fix the language on that so that it can actually be done. The way I read it. The first item on our zoning agenda is docket number 2018-027 for an amendment to Chapter 155, Section 155.227. The petitioner is City of Springfield with regards to request of zoning relief of ordinance amending Chapter 155, Section 155.227 by adding subsection E regarding Lake Springfield leases.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to delay this for 30 days. Please.
Second. Been moved in second to delay for 30 days. And second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-051 for the property located at 2181 South 15th Street. Petitioner is Roy E. Rhodes, Jr. Present zoning classification R2, single-family and duplex residence District 155.017. Requested zoning relief reclassification to S1 neighborhood, commercial and office district, Section 155.030, and a variance of Section 155.090. General provisions to waive the accessory off-street parking requirements and allow the parking spaces in front and side of the building located on the right-of-way to serve as parking. In the alternative, if a variance of Section 155.090 is deemed inappropriate, it is requested that a variance of Sections 155.480I1 through 155.480I5 transitional buffer yard requirement and landscaping reducing the transitional buffer yard along the north and west property lines from 10 feet to 0 feet for off-street parking be granted. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval of the petition as submitted. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning with the provision that no parking places are located within 30 feet of the intersection. Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation.
Second.
Been moved in second that we accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation. Any discussion? Yes, please come up.
I'm the project.
Yes, if you could come up and state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
My name is Cheryl Schott, and I live next door at 2179 South 15th Street. And I would really appreciate, I, we just got the neighborhood fairly good, and now we're going to have a barber shop or whatever. And we had a barber shop down the street at 15th and Ash, and it was Mr. Fresh's Barber Shop, and there was just nothing but people hanging out all the time. I don't, I don't feel comfortable. I have grandkids in the neighborhood, and I just, I just don't feel comfortable with it. And I would, I'd appreciate it if somebody would help me, you know, because I'm the only one here tonight. Everybody else had to work. So it just, I, I have fought and fought for this all the time, and it, I don't know what else to do. I've lived there for 30 years, and I put up with the TV shop, and now I have to put up with another shop or whatever it's going to be, barber shop or whatever. And it just doesn't need to be done. We have enough problems in the neighborhood. There's gunshots all the time, you know, and I'm just, I just don't know what to do. And I can't afford to move out, and it's just, it's just hard. If you guys had lived there, you would understand the way I feel, and I don't want it to happen again. And I just, I'm, I'm at a loss at words to what to say to you guys, because somebody said the last meeting, oh, well, it's going to create jobs. Maybe one job, because the place is not big. It's a very small place. As a matter of fact, it probably should be condemned, because it's not very good. It's not in good shape at all. And I don't know what else to say. I just, I just wish somebody would listen to me.
Is there any questions from council? I'd ask the petitioner if they'd like to respond as far as what's going to transpire within the building itself and anything else you'd like to add to in response to the person making the... Mr. Rhodes, would you come forward?
Roy Rhodes, 1907 Mill Road. It's not going to be a Mr. Fresh barber shop, so, I mean, with the barber we had for 54 years, got cancer and had to close his business, so this person actually worked with him, so, you know, it's, and I mean, I, my building, there's nothing wrong with it. I was there over 30 years, and I've had it completely upgraded on the inside wiring and everything, so I've been there 30, I've been, I grew up on rent for also. I've been in the south end all my life. I had that building for over 30 years. There was a TV shop there before I moved in there. I, that business has been there, there's been a business there since I was a kid, and so, and I'm 64 years old, so, like I said, the building, there's not a thing wrong with the building.
And do you have a tenant now, or...
No, I have, yes, I have a tenant that will move, you know, that will move in there if I get the zoning.
Building's sitting empty. It's sitting empty right now for the interest of revitalizing, giving small businesses a chance.
It's always been a business there. When I was a kid, 10 years old, I lived a block away from there, so it's always been a business, you know. I was actually in that business before she moved in next door, so, and there was a TV shop there before I moved in there, so I've never had a problem with the city on, she talks about garbage, I've never had a problem with the city. I've never received a letter for any trash or anything on my property or anything I own, so.
Any other question? Alderman McMenamin.
I think the mayor asked what your intended use of the building will be, and I think last month or the month before, we heard neighborhood individuals talk about a potential parking issue, that there's no set aside parking for the business location. Can you address that issue?
Oh, on the side of the building, like it's always been. But see, we're not, they're not allowed to park out front, which is not a problem. There's plenty of parking on the side. We done it for the 30, 34 years I was there, so.
And what's your intended use of the building?
A barber shop. Like I said, I, we had a barber until last March, when he got sick. He'd been there 56 years.
Alderman Sinore, is there anything in the, the motion that restricts the use to barber shop?
Just his word.
I mean, see, we have a barber right across here.
And Alderman, if we're going to do that, for one, we should do it for all, so I don't appreciate us trying to limit a gentleman that wants to bring a business back to life in the area. It's hard enough getting people to move over and do business in that area of town, and since we have someone that wants to, I'm all for him doing that, bringing a building back to life that's sitting empty right now.
I'm just asking a good faith question based on the questions that were raised last time, and you gave a good faith answer, and I accept that.
That's because there was some misinformation that was put out last time, which was of no fault of Mr. Rhodes.
You know, if I'd known about the zoning issue years ago, I, before I bought the building, the lady, before we ever had a City Council, I could have got it straightened out, but I assume when I bought the building that it was, you know, commercial or whatever, but, you know, it was under, I guess, the grandfather, so. But there's been a business in that building ever since it was constructed, so.
Very good. Any other questions? All those in favor, the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. Motion passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-056 for the property located at 1708 East Reynolds Street. Petitioner is Legacy Real Estate Professionals LLC. Present zoning classification is I1, light industrial district, Section 155.040. Requested zoning relief variance of Sections 155.157. Discontinuance of use in the I1 light industrial district, Section 155.040, to continue the use of a property as non-conforming, single-family residence in an I1 zoning district. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval of petition as submitted. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning to approve the petition. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation for approval.
Been moved in second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation. In second, any discussion?
Just for curiosity, when it discontinues the use of I1, what does it revert to?
It's actually in an area directly behind the Public Works Building, and that whole block was zoned that way, so they're trying to rezone it for residential, so they can go in and remodel the house. There's houses that sit on the block right now.
Right, but it doesn't say if it's resorting to which, which thing it's resorting to.
If it may, it's staying I1.
But it's allowing residential use?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's, it's in I1, and they want to remodel it for all.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. The docket number passes yes, or 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-57 for the property located at 13 Idlewild. Petitioner is Lindsay Saint and Kareem Hussain as contract purchaser and lease signee. Present zoning classification is R1, single-family residence District Section 155.016. Requested zoning relief variance of the land use plan for Lake Springfield and its marginal properties. Appendix A, Section 9, docs of the Springfield Code of Ordinances to increase the maximum dock extension from the shoreline at the normal pool, full pool elevation of 60 feet instead of the maximum 35 feet allowed. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield Planning County Regional Planning Commission. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the planning and zoning commission's recommendation.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation. In second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-058 for the property located at 2715 Old Ash Street Parcel 1 and 2721 Old Ash Street and 2725 Old Ash Street Parcel 2. Petitioners Roger and Janet Eddington as owners of Parcel 1 and Kathleen Handley as executor of the estate of Joe Celine DeFraides as owner of Parcel 2. Present zoning classification is R1, single-family residence District Section 155.016. Requested zoning relief reclassification to I1, light industrial district, Section 155.040. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is denial of reclassification to I1. Suggests reclassification to B2, general business service district, Section 155.034. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is denied, petition as submitted, and instead grant reclassification to B2, general business service district, Section 155.034. Chair will entertain a motion.
A motion to continue for 30 days?
Second.
Been moved in second to continue for 30 days. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Oh, did you want to say something? Sorry.
I just, I'm Brad Wilson. I'm the attorney for the petitioners. I just wanted to let you know I'm here to answer any questions that the alderman may have, if we could move this forward.
There's a motion to continue for 30 days.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have to have a re-vote, or is that... Okay. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-059 for the property located at 6900 Preston Drive. Petitioner is MMSF Crew LLC as contract purchaser. Present zoning classification is R-5B, general service, general residence and office district, Section 155.021. Requested zoning relief reclassification to S1, neighborhood, commercial and office district, Section 155.030, and a variance of Section 155.102, required accessory off-street parking spaces, schools, business, dance, music, or trade of the Springfield zoning ordinance. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval of the S1 zoning and denial of parking variance requested. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is denied, petition as submitted, but grant a use variance to allow a dance studio and other cultural studies, which might include karate, judo, yoga, or Pilates, or similar uses, and grant the parking variance. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we accept the recommendation of the planning and zoning commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. The motion passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-060 for the property located at 1501 Griffiths Avenue. Petitioner is Stuff-IT-Storage LLC. Present zoning classification is R2, single-family and duplex residence District Section 155.017, with a use variance to allow a banquet hall, docket number 89-97, and a use variance for certain S2 uses as detailed in Exhibit A of docket number 2016-47, with a variance of allowing 5,000 square feet of accessory storage per wholesale establishment. Requested zoning relief reclassification to B2, general business service district, Section 155.034, and a variance of Section 155.050, screening. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is denial of B2, and in the alternative, grant S2 zoning with a use variance to allow the existing building to be used for the purpose of climate-controlled storage and to allow the unapproved property for storage of asset relocation containers, and recommend approval of the requested variance, Section 155.050, screening. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is denied, the petition as submitted, and grant reclassification to S2 zoning with a use variance to allow the existing building to be used for the purpose of climate-controlled storage and to allow the unapproved property for storage of asset relocation containers, ARC, along with restricted hours of operation from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, limited hours on Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and restriction of vehicles moving arcs on the property to a fifth wheel. Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the recommendation of the planning and zoning commission.
Second, the motion.
Been moved in second, the planning and zoning commission recommendation. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-061 for the property located at 544, 548, 558, and 560 West Jefferson Street and 128 North Parker Avenue. Petitioner is Mark Randerman as contract purchaser. Present zoning classification is B1, highway business service district, Section 155.033. Requested zoning relief of variance of Section 155.061, basic yard requirements to allow parking to be 5 feet from the west property line with a front yard of 5 feet instead of the 15 feet required per code. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission and approve the petition. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept staff recommendation for approval.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept staff recommendation, planning and zoning commission recommendation of approval. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Final item on the agenda is docket number 2018-062 for the property located at 1824 South Fifth Street. Petitioner is Anthony Finfrock Trust. Present zoning classification is R2, single-family and duplex residence District Section 155.017. Requested zoning relief of variance of Section 155.061, basic yard requirements to allow in addition to be 1 feet 7 and 3/4 inches from the east property line for a year's rear setback of 1 feet 7 3/4 inches instead of the 20 feet required per code. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission and approve the petition. Chair will entertain a motion.
Yes, I move to accept the recommendation of the planning and zoning commission.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. That concludes the zoning portion of our meeting. This time, chair will recognize Treasure Busher for the presentation and financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The corporate fund in the month of October had a beginning balance of $5,628,572. We took in total receipts of $9,424,144. The corporate fund had total disbursements in the month of October of $7,424,439, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance of $7,628,277. This concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Move to accept.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the Treasurer's report. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the November 20th, 2018 City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the, first reading of ordinances into the record of this City Council meeting.
I move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this City Council meeting.
I move.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the consent agenda passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Agenda number 2017-103, 2017-436, 2017-489, 2018-110, 2018-285, 2018-322, and 2018-395 remain tabled during committee. Is there any action on any of those? Chair will entertain a motion to continue agenda number 2018-482 and 2018-483 until the December 4th, 2018 City Council meeting regarding the annexation agreement and petition for annexation by Springfield Airport Authority.
Go move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number 2018-490, an ordinance levying and assessing taxes to partially fund the statutory contribution of the police and fire pension funds. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2018-490 on final passage.
So move.
Second.
Been moved in second. I think someone signed up to speak, I believe.
Director McCarty. Director McCarty.
Yes.
On this, um, excuse me, Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Let me just speak. On this ordinance, do you know what figures of actuary used to calculate our numbers that we're going to be short?
Are you searching for a particular figure, or...
Yes, sir. What percentage did they use, like 7s?
Are you talking about the assumed rate of return?
Yes, sir.
7%.
7%. Thank you very much.
Has someone wanted to come up and speak?
Robert David Smire. I am the Vice President of the Police Pension Fund. I was here a month ago speaking to you about the contributions that were being discussed, about being made, and I brought to your attention in your actuary report that you had done from Launberg and Amen, that the police pension fund was falling short of even paying the unfunded, or the interest on the unfunded liability. That amount was $155,000. We have submitted our letter as far as what we would like to see you contribute, which would include that $155,000 for a total of $13,238,445. That's just an addition of $155,000 that was not being covered, or not covering the interest on the unfunded liability. interest on the unfunded liability. Anybody have any questions for me, because that's why I thought I was here?
Alderman McMenma?
Mr. Davidsmeyer. Is that a letter that was given to the Council a month ago that you're referring to?
No, I actually sent an email to all Council members just explaining what I just tried to explain there, and that I understand that right now is not the time to make any other changes because of upcoming elections in April, but I do request that at least the interest on the unfunded liability is covered. It's something that has occurred for at least the last three years. I know that because I went back and looked at each of the actuarial reports. 2016, it was 669,000 short. 2017, it was 440,000 short, and this year it'll be $155,000 short, and it's a pattern that we can't continue to follow.
If I may make a recommendation, and this is something I've asked for about eight years now. Typically, we get the police and fire pension fund reports to the City Council on the day of our meeting. I know that happened with our fire reports. We got five attachments to an email that we got at, I think, 1:00 today, and maybe yours came after that, but that's just unacceptable to give the City Council information relevant to this ordinance on the day of the decision, on the day of the vote. It's got to come to the City Council earlier in time so we can review what the letter of advice states from the Pension Board Presidents for both police and fire.
Okay. I can do that in the future. I think I pointed out that the only difference is that we've added $155,000, which I notified you guys of a month ago, that you were short in the recommended funding amount from Lauderbach and Amen, so I'll make sure that we do that in the future.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Alderman? The one thing I'll add is we'll take a look at our budget coming up, and there's been times where we were able to make a extra payment, and that's what we'll.
Yes, sir.
Continue to take a look at. The one thing that was perceived to be a legislative or a comment made from me was not made from me, it was made from Director McCarty. That might be his.
Okay.
Opinion with regards to political movement. Anybody that knows me knows that I do what I think's in the best interest. I don't care what day of the year it is or what year it is, and that's, I think that's why Council, City Council members haven't raised property taxes since the late 1980s. And the reason for that, and we'll go over it in the budget, if you look at our cumulative total of all our taxing bodies, the county, Lincolnland Airport, you know, Capitol Township, School District, you add all those up, and we're in competition, or we're in the lower rung with regards to our peers of Bloomington, Champaign, there's no propensity for us to raise our property taxes. And what we talk about all the time is economic development. Well, I know when people move, one of the first things they ask is, what's the property taxes in that area? So, in my opinion, that's why I haven't chosen to raise property taxes with regards to that, because we want to remain competitive with regards to property taxes. And that's why we looked at, when we did our award meetings, what people were telling us, we need to draw in from outside sources. So look to sales tax, look towards tourism tax, and that's what we've done to address those shortfalls. So we'll continue to, you know, address the struggle with regards to pension funds, and that's a difficult situation, but we appreciate you pointing out the deficiency of the $155,000. I'm not sure if that was brought to everybody's attention, and we'll do what we can to address it in the upcoming budget, so we hope these dialogues continue, especially with regards to pensions, because it just doesn't fall on the City Council. It falls on our legislative leaders, it falls on the pension boards, it falls on the police and fire unions. We all need to work collectively to really address the issue, because it's a, you know, train that keeps moving, and even though the city might have a good budget year, doesn't mean that we can, you know, increase everything. And so that's what we really need to take a look at, what's the long-term remedy for the police and fire pension funds? And that's really the key component that we all have to work on collectively together. So from my standpoint, I think most Aldermen are in agreement, property taxes, for the most part, we take pride in not having raised it because that keeps us competitive. But other taxing bodies have raised it through the years, and so that's just the hand we're dealt with, and, you know, we'll continue to accept the challenges and try to address these difficult situations.
That opinion that I just gave there, political society, is mine, and we too also.
It was in the paper too.
I understand, and I heard it was in the paper, but we also, as a pension board, have looked at other options, and we did talk to a company called Foster &amp; Foster, who through one of the pension conferences that we went to, spoke about how to decrease that liability over a period of time of 10 years. It might raise slightly for that 10-year period, but then at the end of the 10 years, it starts to drop off again, which I think would be something that the Council would think is a good thing, because otherwise, if we keep going the way that we have been going, as we've seen in the past, it's just going to continue to get larger and larger and larger. And even if it is, something's done over at the State House. I know they've been talking about kicking it down to 2050, 2055, and they're reducing the funded amount to 80%. Even if we continue to do the things that we've done in the past, I believe that it's still going to continue to go up. There'll be a short period there where maybe it does level off, but in the end, we would be doing the same thing that we've been doing for the last 20, 30, 40 years.
Yeah, you have to continue, well, you have to start making the extra payments, even if they extend that.
Yes, sir.
Period out, and it reduces the actuarial amount, we need to pay what we are now or then some. I mean, that's what we need to do to, it's just like paying off your mortgage early, you know, you have to.
Exactly.
Do that. So that's the struggle, is how do we find the resources to make that happen?
Yes, sir. And we had Foster.
We'd like to see the Foster &amp; Foster recommendations. I don't know if you had those.
We had them come into both pension boards. It was open. We had nobody else attend, but the next thing is, that we're talking of is in the springtime, having them come back and do a presentation for you, and also maybe even spending some money to get the numbers so that you could see exactly using the numbers of the city with the budget and everything else, exactly what that would mean to you, not just a guesstimate. So.
Great.
Anything else?
Appreciate it. Any other questions? Anybody else wish to address the Council on this item?
All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no, the voting is now open. And the ordinance passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Chair will entertain a motion for an ominous vote for Agenda Number 2018-496 through 2018-498.
So moved.
Second.
Is regarding appointments and reappointments. Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries. 2018-496, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Patrick T. Timoney to the Springfield Civil Service Commission. 2018-497, an ordinance approving the appointment of Justin A. Blanford to the Commission on International Visitors. 2018-498, an ordinance approving the appointment of Amanda J. Brott to the Springfield Disabilities Commission. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2018-496 through 2018-498 on final passage.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes, sir. Do we have a resume for Mr. Timoney?
Yeah. He's here, maybe he can give it to us. Would you like any of the nominees come forward? They are here, I know they are here, so we appreciate their attendance.
Mr. Timoney. I have a question for Mr. Timoney.
If the others would like to come up too, that'd be great, they can put a name with the face.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your service on the Civil Service Commission.
Yes.
How many years have you served?
I've been on since June of 2012, appointed by Mayor Houston, and have been chairman for the la, it'll be three years in January.
I think this comes, then this goes to the right person. Did word get back to you that someone did some research and discovered that our Civil Service Commission is, under our city code, is to give the City Council a report once a year on the activities of the Civil Service Commission, and if you're aware of that, please give us a report once a year to know the level of activity and the major issues or cases that come forward through your body.
That was brought to our attention as a commission at the last monthly meeting, and we addressed that with Human Resources to start preparing that as stated. It's, apparently it's been several years since such a report's been submitted.
Thank you very much.
More than 12 years.
That's a great answer.
More than since prior to 2012.
You gave the right answer, thank you.
Thanks, Alderman.
If the other two would like to come up and state your data, we'd appreciate it. Anything else you'd like to share?
Hi, I'm Amanda Brott. I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Hope here in Springfield. I've been there for 13 years, and I'm excited to serve on this commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Justin Blanford. I currently serve as the curator for the Illinois Governor's Mansion. I've managed museums and landmarks in the capital city for the state of Illinois for a little more than 15 years, and we appreciate your consideration for my application on the commission, and look forward to serving the city in this way. Thank you.
You've done a great job with the mansion, too.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no, the voting is now open. And the ordinance has passed as 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda.
Motion for ominous vote on 2018-499-500.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to have an ominous vote for 2018-499 and 2018-500. And seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number 2018-499, an ordinance amending Chapter 30, Section 130.05 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to compensation and expenses for elected officials of the City of Springfield. Chair will entertain a motion, oh, sorry. Next item is 2018-500, an ordinance setting salaries for the mayor, city clerk, city treasurer, and Alderman commencing on the date of inauguration in 2019. Chair will entertain a motion to place items 2018-499 and 2018-500 on final passage.
So moved.
I have an amendment.
Okay. Yep. Been moved and seconded. Chair will entertain a motion to amend Agenda Number 2018-500.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, and the amendment, if you go over that, Counselor?
Just briefly, you may recall a question was asked at the last meeting on the timing of the inauguration, and this is to address that specific issue relating to the effective date of the ordinance, or the term of office would start no sooner than 180 days after the effective date of the ordinance if it is adopted. That is to comply with that ambiguity or that discussion that we had at the last meeting. The original ordinance did not say the date of the inauguration. This is to address that. The amendment.
Any discussion or questions on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries. Any discussion on the items as amended? All those in favor of 2018-499, 2018-500, vote yes, those opposed vote no, the voting And the motion passes six voting yes, none, or by voting no. Chair, any unfinished business come before the City Council?
Yes, please.
Alderman McTyler?
Mark Mahoney, if you could come up. Director, I've been receiving, I'm sure the other Aldermen have been as well, emails and phone calls from people who are concerned about the free pickup with the snow having interrupted some of the ability to bag and put to the curb. The question has been, has come to me several times if we're going to extend the collection period.
Well, I think, right now, there's at least two more weeks left of it, so our intention was kind of see how the weather went. It could be the weather breaks and there's not much more leaf raking going on, so if it's able, if we were able to get out and about and do it into December, we'll probably look at some options to do that. We've always kind of had that in the back of our mind, even with the current six weeks, so it's always kind of a, usually you get most of the bulk in November, a lot of leaves are down, it's just like you said, that the snow came at the wrong time, so.
Right, and right now, a lot of people.
So the short answer is yes.
People who use mulchers and things of that nature, it's still wet, so it's difficult to use some of the equipment.
Yes, it's difficult to use even at rake, so right now.
I got the same call, Director. I got the same calls, too.
Yeah, well, so do we. Yeah, we got, we, right now, we just want to give it two weeks, so it looks like, right now, it's kind of the next four days, pretty good, I guess, compared to the way it's been. So we'll see what it does, and then after that, sometimes we'll do a sweep with our crews, too, to kind of help out, and then depending where we are, so if the weather cooperates and people are raking leaves in December, we'll work with them to get them picked up.
Okay. And then the only other thing which I had related to the same topic is I've been, I work downtown, I don't know if they've said anything to Andrew or to Herman, but I've had some people complain that the Capitol is, I know they're blowing them back in, but they're blowing the leaves out as traffic is going by, and sometimes they're not blowing all of it back up to pick it up. You know, like they're, they're doing what they do, they come along, they blow it all the way down to the street, and then they try to pick it up from there, but sometimes they don't seem to get all of it, and we've told them before in the past not to blow it into the street.
We can say something to them again. Typically, they blow it out, and then that's kind of how they collect it, and they, like a lot of landscape people do, as long as they pick it up immediately, we don't usually have a problem with it unless it's disrupting traffic, so we can talk to them about it.
Yeah, I had somebody send me a picture from back at the Stratton Building, I guess the person was about in the middle of the street, and you could just see a line of leaves all the way down to Second Street.
Yeah.
And it didn't look like that had been there.
You should get them to blow them out in the alleys, since you guys got alleys down.
There's no alley behind the Capitol.
I'll no longer respond to alley comments.
We'll talk to the Capitol in a second.
And like I said, they've been good about it in the past, it's just I didn't know if maybe somebody new took over.
Is that it?
I would like to thank the Public Works crew, they did a phenomenal job with the snow removal, when you had five inches, so. And that was a correct call on the snow emergency, I think that really helped alleviate things and move it expeditiously, so thank you very much.
Pass that along, thank you.
I have one, I have one question. I saw the, in the emails that we received last week with regard to, that go out to the neighborhood associations, there was a, one comment that you were finishing up on all roadwork. So what does that mean for 11th Street from Cook to South Grand?
Yeah, that's going to be completed, so what'll it mean for that is, the sewer work is pretty close to being completed, so once that's completed, we'll do, really, it's a, I want to say temporary repair, but the road will be repaired and opened up for full traffic, but we'll probably, and when the weather turns in the spring, we'll do a complete overlay of that area.
So do you know how soon that'll happen?
Our goal is to get it done as soon as possible, so by the end of, hopefully sometime in December, it'll be wrapping that up, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other unfinished business come before the Council? We do have, we did have a Lincoln Herndon Open House, Alderman Desensel came by, we appreciate it, and Alderman Señor, thank you very much, and that's going to open formally on Saturday at noon, I believe, and then the Holly Walks Tree Lighting's going to be 5:30 downtown, and Saturday is the Small Business Saturday in downtown Springfield, so hopefully everybody will come down for that. And then the Love It Vote, that's where we're trying to have a concert in the summertime on the Y Block, and DSI coordinated an effort to receive $25,000 in funding, along with the Springfield Area Arts Council, and we submitted a letter of support, and we did finish within the top 15, so the top 25 cities go on to a review panel, and they'll determine the top 15 that get the $25,000. So we're in the running still.
Good news.
Yep. So is there any new business come before the City Council?
Yeah.
Yep, Alderman Proctor.
Kind of in that vein of good news, and when we're in kind of a spirit of bad news all the time, it seems like. City of Springfield was ranked one of the best American cities to work in the tech industry in 2018, so.
I'm good.
No, I think News Channel 20 did something on that yesterday, but it's good news for the City of Springfield.
That's good. So any other? Alderman Señor.
Yeah, last week I was at a conference in North Carolina about engaging the community to create a community within the community, and what this is, is AARP is moving toward making cities age-friendly. Champaign and Danville are already a part of this, and I'm urging Springfield to become a part of this, and all it is, is when we're building new, that we keep in mind that most of us around here are reaching an age that is. of us around here are reaching an age that is upwards of 30 years old, and we want, when we get to the other place where we get to enjoy our life's work, that when we start living like that, that we have places to live, and if our homes need to be modified, they can come in and do that. But areas are, it's geared toward making the community age-friendly, so when you're building, you're building with that in mind, and you're building shopping, recreational activities, medical activities, and retail activities within close proximity, so it's within the distance where you, and they have transportation issues that are also keeping in mind. So, it's all a big, one big forum, and I think it's something that we need to look at more closely and start moving towards, because it would benefit our city, because if we can get more people to stay here and live, we can increase our tax base and maybe possibly decrease our taxes that we are charging, but we need to keep the older resources here, because they have resources and they can use them to put back into the community.
Isn't that what they came and gave a presentation on, I think?
Yes, but we didn't, we didn't sign a commitment, there's a five-year commitment. Once you sign it, you can start and work toward that for five years to get, accomplish everything that needs to be accomplished within the guidelines there. So, I would ask, urge you to take a look at that, to see if we can bring forward-
I think Wonwerta was working towards that, I believe. We'll take a look at it, make sure we move in that direction. Because we do have a great medical community, and I think Public Works has done a phenomenal job with the sidewalks and making them more accessible, so I'm sure we can reach that goal pretty easily. Any other new business? I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Abe Lincoln was the first president. Oh, you want to do it? Go ahead.
No, I don't want to do that.
Alderwoman Turner? Sorry.
I would not want to do that. But you just mentioned what a phenomenal job Public Works and Mark Mahoney's doing, so today's his birthday, so I think we should tell him happy birthday.
Happy birthday to, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Mark. Happy birthday to you.
Ooh, mayor shouldn't sing.
How old are you, Mark? You want to share?
Old enough.
He hasn't reached that AARP level like we have.
He's got to be around 50.
What'd you look at me for? I think he's 50.
Yep.
Is he 50?
Very good. So, I think we do have Daryl Harrell, he wanted to address the city council.
No, finish your Thanksgiving.
Oh, okay, yep. Well, Abe Lincoln was the first president to formally recognize Thanksgiving. So, with that spirit of Abe Lincoln, we wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
So, Daryl?
Mayor, while he's coming, I want to thank Pleasant Grove Baptist for having Veterans Day and recognizing our law enforcement. They recognize the police department and any first responders, and specifically the veterans that served in the Vietnam War, and it was a very touching ceremony, I think, so I want to thank, is it Dr., Pastor Reverend Ross, William D. Ross, or Pleasant Grove and Pleasant Grove Baptist Church?
And their choir was phenomenal.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and your administration. Subject, Welcome Walt Disney and the Circus is in Springfield, Illinois. I have three friends that gives me words of encouragement about how to approach sexual harassment. Amnon, Tamar, and Absalon. Amnon was in love with his sister Tamar because she was so beautiful. His uncle gave him advice to disgrace her. His brother Absalon's rage killed Amnon. The circus is in Springfield, Illinois. There was once a private detective known throughout the world who was good at his job, to the point that he was hated because he could solve crimes that the commanders gave to the most qualified. His foolishness would confine the wise. Everybody called him crazy, and no one wanted to work with him. They would send women to destroy his credibility, men to harass him, and he would fast-forward their shenanigans. They could not upset the private detective, nor could they understand his ways of solving crimes, so they made fun of him and called him crazy because he wasn't elite, and they did not make the team. There was a crime committed, and no one was able to solve the crime because it happened in a Looney Tunes world. Welcome Walt Disney, who framed Roger Rabbit? Blessings the man that walketh not in the counsel of the wicked, nor stand in the way of sinners, nor sit in the seat of sinners, but his delight is in the law of the Lord, and in his law he meditates day and night. He is like a tree planted by streams of water, which yields its fruit in its season, and whose leaves does not wither whatsoever he do its prosper. Not so the wicked, they are like the child that the wind blows away. Therefore, the wicked will not stand in the judgment, nor sinners in the assembly of the righteous. Mr. Mayor, the circus is in Springfield, Illinois, and Walt Disney, you are welcome. I was in the land of Oz, and I met the evil witch and her flying monkeys. Now I am faced with lions, tigers, and bears, oh my. On the street she is Little Red Riding Hood, look out for the big bad wolf. My gorilla wear badges, and they can eat your animals like gummy bears. Hey, hickory dickory and dot, your mouse ran up the clock. I was told to follow the yellow brick road to the Emerald City to talk to the wise and noble Oz. If I told any lies, my guides will rise and give me golden slippers to find my way home. Conclusion, Mr. Mayor, would your righteous character allow me to use a company vehicle before Thanksgiving to find out who framed Roger Rabbit? Red, white, and blue, elite. Also, for transportation of the homeless to the SOS, because the enemy of my enemy is my friend. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council?
No, you're not.
Like to come up?
I want to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving and a blessed one, and make sure the driver drives on the right side of the road and not make a left-hand turn from a right-hand lane, okay? I have a complaint. I brought this a long time ago. Chief of the Fire Department, I was on the west side, and there was a fire truck coming, and he was not slowing down, which he shouldn't have to. But, is there cameras on those, like poles, by any chance?
Are you asking, are there cameras on the fire engines?
No, on the light poles.
I can't answer that.
Well, whoever can answer it, I wish you would.
It depends on which light pole you're talking about, dear, because there are some cameras on some intersections, some intersections do have cameras.
Well, right now, I'm trying to think of what street it was. Anyway, I almost got hit again. I don't know if they like my red Jeep or what, but this is the third time, a fire tree. I guess they want my color for their fire chief, for their trucks, I don't know, but I'm getting tired of it. And then, the lady was in a red truck, made a left-hand turn from the right-hand lane, in front of the fire truck. So, I thought we were supposed to have the lights where it says you go.
They're working on it, should be hopefully by the end of December?
Just got passed two weeks ago.
Uh-huh. I mean, this is-
This, it's only phase one, which will be on veterans.
Just the west side, which is great, because that's the most busiest place in the world, the most dumbest drivers, I have to admit, okay?
Don't talk about Alderman Hanauer that way.
I won't contest that. I won't contest that. And they went and put it around.
Also, I have another complaint. What are you going to do with your garbage people, that don't know how to pick up their garbage when they drop it? I know that's a big question. That's an honest-to-God big question, you know? Because it's getting awful tiring when I back out of my driveway and I have to pick up the garbage before I can go out, because I'm afraid there's something in it might be punching my tires. You know, I'm not the garbage people.
We meet with them on an annual basis, so we made notes of complaints.
There's only one person, one company in this town that does that.
If you want to get that company to, Director Mahoney-
Waste Management.
Okay.
She got it to him. And another thing, is there a fine for people pushing the grass out in the street, blow-drying?
There's an ordinance that addresses that, and I've spoken on it the last two summers, when that is happening, you need to take pictures of it and report the people.
I did. I gave it to Mark Mahoney.
And report the people, because-
Yes, because it's very disturbing, because it goes down to the sewer, and then it blocks-
But we just have to start enforcing that.
Yeah, when? Christmas of next year? Herman?
Ask Director Mahoney, dear.
So, you can get with Director Mahoney after the meeting.
It's a happy birthday, Mark.
It's your birthday, but I'm sorry. Okay?
Just say it with a smile.
Okay.
I think Herman should be involved in that meeting, since he's providing all the answers to the questions.
I would be more than happy to sit in with him.
There you go.
Thank you. I would like to know one more thing. I know the chief of the police department's not here.
Yes, he is, he's right behind you.
Right there.
He's undercover.
He's undercover today.
I did not see you, sir.
Where's Waldo?
Anyway, I want to thank him for his, stop talking about me, you know I'm crazy anyway.
How'd you know? How'd you guess?
You know I'm crazy anyway. Just because I got pink hair doesn't mean anything.
No, it does not.
It does not. And I can outride all of you still there. Please, Chief, would you mind telling your officers, the neighborhood police officer that comes out to our neighborhood, that I do appreciate him, and he is on his job 24/7, not seven, but 24/7? Not two hours, but 24/7?
That's Officer Newman, and it'd be 400.
There you go. That's right. And he's a good man, and don't ever talk about him. Thank you, guys, and have a beautiful holiday, and please stay in the right lane.
Thank you, Alice Rainey.
And I got to drive in the left lane next week.
You probably would, too.
Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the executive, to executive session, to discuss pending and probable litigation.
Will move.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. We're adjourned to executive session. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the executive session, reconvene to the regular city council meeting.
Will move.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the city council meeting.
Will move.